Good afternoon. Maps?
Here.
Rubio?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. Now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decree. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. Individuals may testify for three minutes unless the presiding officer states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. Presiding officer preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in injection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. If you are a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. Virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. First up is the 4th, 5th, Agenda Item Number 10193 PM time certain first reading of an on emergency ordinance.
Authorize agreement between the city, Portland Streetcar, Inc., and 1535-A1 LLC for public benefits related to the Montgomery Park area plan.
Before City Council today, colleagues, this is the Montgomery Park Public Benefits Agreement. This is an agreement amongst the city, the Portland Streetcar Incorporated, and a property owner in the Montgomery Park area. This agreement is part of the package of the Montgomery Park Area Plan actions that will implement the plan goals with a provision for affordable housing, for jobs, and for a park, the commemoration of York, and cost sharing for the streetcar extension and new streets in the area as well. The item is being brought to us by the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I want to note that Commissioner Ryan has an amendment he wants to introduce, and we'll hear about that shortly. For now, I'll pass it on to Deputy City Administrator Olivera and Bureau staff to present the project. Good afternoon, and welcome all of you.
Thank you, Mayor. Donnie Olivera for the record, Deputy City Administrator for Community Economic Development. So, council, as a reminder, we are in the pathway of bringing the Montgomery Park Action Plan through you all over the next several weeks. This is a new item that is a continuation of the topic that we had last week. Specifically, this is about the public benefits agreement that we developed with the private sector partners who own properties in that area. Can't stress enough how emblematic this is of the type of partnership we want with the private sector. This is a local family, longtime business owner, who instead of just doing what they could have done by right today, has instead chosen to partner with the city to develop an agreement that brings broader benefits to the broader community, looking at affordable housing goals, middle wage job goals, a new park. These are the added investments that make our city thrive, make us more welcoming, and is the type of leadership we're looking for in our public sector partners, or, excuse me, private sector partners, to deliver on our housing strategy, our economic goals, and frankly, just the well-being of the city. So I want to thank them in advance for leaning in with the city to help develop this agreement. Along with that, of course, you've heard about the transportation element, which is essential to this neighborhood and will be really a beacon for what it means to thrive in this particular neighborhood. Now with that, I'm going to turn it over to Patricia DeFenderfer and Ryan Singer from BPS to go through the specifics of the benefits agreement, and we'll take questions right after the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ryan Singer. I'm the principal planner for long-range planning and urban design at BPS. I'm joined by Patricia DeFenderfer, and Eric Engstrom is in the audience as well. Today, I'm going to present the Montgomery Park Public Benefits Agreement. The Public Benefits Agreement is an important companion to the Montgomery Park Area Plan and the Montgomery Park Transit Project. As a reminder, the plan and the locally preferred alternative were heard by the council on November 13th. The Montgomery Park Area Plan would amend the comprehensive plan and zoning regulations in an area west of Highway 30 between Northwest Vaughn and Northwest Nicolai Streets to allow a wider range of uses, including housing, retail, office, and light manufacturing. These land use changes are paired with an extension of the Portland Streetcar from Northwest Northrup Street and 23rd Avenue to Northwest Wilson Street and Northwest 26th Avenue. Council discussed amendments to the plan on November 13th, and we will return on November 4th with more details of those amendments for the council to consider. The agenda for today's hearing is as shown. I will go over the elements of the Public Benefits Agreement and discuss the value capture strategy. We'll take testimony from the public and have a discussion with the council. The recommendation is to adopt the Public Benefits Agreement by ordinance. The Public Benefits Agreement is an agreement between the city, the owners of the former Esco Steel Foundry Site, and Portland Streetcar, Inc. There are six main elements to the agreement that are the obligation of the property owners. The first is a commitment to provide onsite 400 middle-wage jobs. Middle-wage jobs here are defined as jobs that do not require a four-year degree, that are making around $57,000 annually, or 50% of the area median income for a family of four. The requirement also targets jobs in industry clusters like manufacturing, metals, machinery, and food and beverage production and distribution. Keep in mind that this is a commitment by an existing property owner, some of whom have businesses in Portland, to create jobs in a specific area. The second element is the provision of affordable housing, either by providing, building 200 units of income-restricted affordable housing to families making 60% of the median family income within seven years, or by building a higher percentage of income-restricted units, 15% per project. The third element is the siting and development of a 40,000-square-foot public park. This requirement has milestones for planning and development, and a commitment for enhanced maintenance of the park by the property owners. The fourth element is a commitment to fund and participate in the development of a feature commemorating York, an enslaved member of the Corps of Discovery, also known as the Lewis and Clark Expedition. Portland Streetcar, Inc. has agreed to coordinate this effort, and the York Collective is identified in the agreement as an important partner in this effort. The fifth element is a commitment to contributing toward the funding of the streetcar extension through right-of-way dedication, participation in the local improvement district, and building out of street elements. The sixth and final element is support for wealth building with an incentive for the provision of affordable ownership commercial space. The Public Benefits Agreement is part of a value capture strategy that seeks to use some of the value generated by changes to the land use to achieve public policy goals. BPS did analyses early in the process, showing that value capture was feasible during the more robust pre-pandemic market conditions. The current economic conditions are not as favorable towards value capture. However, this is a long-range plan, and we believe that it's important to have this agreement in place as this area will be built out over 20 or more years. Provisions in the code, like inclusionary housing, are also value capture mechanisms, and as I described in the Public Benefits Agreement, those are an important part of this value capture strategy. We have also done some work to estimate the value of the public benefits: the streetcar extension, affordable housing, 400 middle-wage jobs, and 40,000-square-foot public park. The contribution by the private property owners over time are conservatively estimated at $38 million. These contributions are leveraged to create benefits that are conservatively estimated around $240 million. The analysis is, especially at this scale and time, more of an art than a science. So while we're providing you these numbers, you should think of them more in orders of magnitude, and really focus on the policy goals of transit, housing, economic development, environmental resiliency, and quality of life that the Montgomery Park Area Plan, along with the Public Benefits Agreement, would deliver. Just a reminder for the council that we are now in the sort of dark outline box here, the November 21st hearing on the Public Benefits Agreement. We'll return on December 4th for further discussion of the full legislative package, and as anticipated, the council will vote on December 11th on all three of the related items. I will end here with the recommendation, and we're happy to take questions.
Does that complete your entire presentation? Great. Colleagues, any questions for staff at this particular juncture? All right. Commissioner Ryan, I believe you have an amendment you'd like to put forward.
Yes, Mayor. I know I've had a chance to share this information with my colleagues early this morning, some last night, and it really stemmed from the dialogue around middle-wage jobs and the conversation that you could witness on both sides, the working waterfront coalition, and also the people bringing this development forward. And so we thought it would be wise to make sure that we formalize that data so that we track it, and it will be part of this journey. And we think it also will add value as we look at other projects that the city will embark upon, especially as it relates to some other developments, whether it's ALMSI and others. So we thought it just would add value to the governance of this body. And so with that, I will now read the formal amendment. I move to amend Exhibit A to add the following subsection 2.3.2. For informational purposes, the report will include the following additional data: the racial breakdown of employees holding the newly created middle-wage jobs in an anonymized manner, and to the extent individual employees elect to disclose race or ethnicity of, or the employer otherwise has the information. And two, information related to whether the businesses that created the new middle-wage jobs are new businesses to the city, or have relocated from within the city, and if so, from where they located. This data will be collected through surveys or third-party sources as available.
Very good. Colleagues, is there any questions or a second for this?
Second.
Commissioner Gonzalez, I think I heard your voice first. Commissioner Gonzalez, seconds. Any further discussion on this?
I have a quick question.
Commissioner Maps?
I just wanted to invite staff to reflect on the amendment. Any thoughts?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioners, Patricia DeFenderfer, Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, for the record. Commissioner Maps, I think that this is fine addition to just make sure that there's additional data collected as this report that's already required per the Public Benefit Agreement is collected, and it gives us some better understanding of who's holding these jobs, where these jobs originated from, and it will just help us, as Commissioner Ryan said, implement this plan in an effective way and inform future actions as well.
I think we were discovering some speculation-type conversations, and why don't we just ensure that we have just some dispassionate, honest data as we go forward with such conversations?
All right. Very good. Are there any other amendments? All right, public testimony.
We have nine people signed up. First is Cassie Cohen. Cassie's joining us online. Hi, Cassie. We see you. Can you unmute?
Okay.
You're good. You can go ahead.
Thank you. All right. Greetings, Mayor and Commissioner. So I thank you, and we thank you. As you know, I represent Portland Harbor Community Coalition and the York Collective. Thank you for bringing forward the proposed Public Benefits Agreement for the Montgomery Park Area Plan. Nothing is more important than honoring our ancestors. York Collective is driving shared liberation through community-led development. York Urban Village and York District will cultivate a space that honors the origins of Black history in the Pacific Northwest as it relates to regional tribal histories. We have sort of a question, an outstanding question, in terms of what the status of Bureau of Planning and Sustainability connecting with the Tribal Chief and Elder of the Click-Tap Bands of Yakima Nation. We did not hear any response back on that. Wanting to make sure he's not let down by City Council, like other times his people have experienced being let down by government. His interests should have triggered full tribal consultation for all regional tribes on MPAP. The Public Benefits Agreement honestly should have included tribal consultation and negotiation as well. We ask that you include York Collective in the PBA rather than York Core Group, so since our name has changed. We are grateful for the inclusion, yet it must show stronger language, showing a true commitment to work with York Collective, the entity who called for the honoring of York in this district in the first place. York Collective has begun its journey to form a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity. And we had requested several times to be included in the negotiations of the PBA, yet we were never invited in. Despite our inability to directly negotiate the terms of the PBA, we choose to move forward in collaboration with the city of Portland, Streetcar, Inc., and property owners of the soon-to-be-York district. We ask for reciprocity. Our intentions are to foster sustained health, prosperity, belonging for current and future generations. We ask you now, we actually ask City Council members to raise your hands, like to hear if there are electeds that genuinely honor and respect York's collective's true input into decision-making on the Public Benefits Agreement by hearing, receiving, and responding to our specific detailed recommended changes before your final vote. Can I see raising hands if council members are open to hear?
Just to be clear, this is public testimony, so we're not taking council action during public testimony, but thank you.
Outstanding question.
Next, we have Candace Jimenez.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wheeler, and to all the council members, thank you so much for the time today, and we just want to share our gratitude for this Public Benefits Agreement. Stating for the record, my name is Candace Jimenez. I'm a citizen of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. I'm also a board member on the Portland Harbor Community Coalition, as well as a member of the York Collective. So I just want to address a component of best practice that was brought up previously, that I also spoke to last week with the plan itself, and to just reiterate the critical nature of indigenous land stewardship with respect to public benefits in this city as a critical component to preservation of cultural resources. So with respect to that, I know in previous meetings we've had, including one with BPS, we were noted of rulemaking efforts that were happening at the state of Oregon within the Department of Land Conservation and Development with regard to their cultural areas definition. And so I just want to make that as a part of this testimony, that coming from the state side as well, there's work happening with respect to lands and cultural resources, and to note that it's really important in the mission of this work, as well as public benefit agreements across the city, that we take time to honor and reflect on that, and especially the need for tribal consultation and taking into account cultural resources. I want to give my gratitude to you as well, Mayor Wheeler, for taking your time earlier this week to meet with the Native community out at the NEA Family Center. I know that meant a lot to many of us, and I know you took time out of your day, along with Sam Chase, to do that. So I just see that as a reflection of what we're taking into account here with the Benefits Agreement itself. So just to reiterate with what was already shared, the history of regional tribes and partnership with groups like the York Collective are very valued, and I think that's noted in the mission statement that was read earlier. We also want to just note that there's a suggestion of stronger language in part, section 5.2.3, that talks about as deemed appropriate, but we would just offer stronger language like "shell" or "will serve" or "shall assist" to really just dig down into what that means for this public benefits. And so just want to end here with just acknowledging original possession and ongoing stewardship of these lands, and to make sure that in the future, as well as here, it's not too late to continue with tribal consultation. Those efforts are ongoing, and I know the city is working hard to make sure that that occurs. And I know we've heard that commitment from you too, Mayor Wheeler, so we thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Troy Winslow?
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. I just want to read something real quick that one of our members of York Collective passed along to me, and it seems apropos. "My ocean floors are covered with his people's resistance. I carry their spirit in every splash I make. Their humming, their lost voices, their last words have become a part of my sweetest songs. When he is whole again, when York knows what he is worth, I will well up inside of him, and he will hear them sing." This is my great-grandfather, and six of his kids, all daughters, or two boys also. When I think of public benefits, I think of what they were denied and how that affected their ancestors, me being one of them. And I can't for the life of me understand really what a public benefit is without truly defining what community is, and how we build it. I just, I feel like this Public Benefits Agreement is just business as usual. It tries to hit marks, it doesn't. We have an opportunity to do things different. We've had opportunities in the past, and they just slip by. I feel like the city has done a great job of running interference, of obstructing, of preventing landowners and community members from truly engaging with one another. And that, I mean, the jig is up in terms of what voters have decided to do with our city government. That was made very clear. I hope that we can move forward in a way that is truly uplifting community and does meaningfully, as far as the city is concerned, does facilitate meaningful engagement. I don't blame individuals. I know this is a systems issue, but we need to change these systems, and we need to have the courage to change these systems, because I continually see opportunities that slip away that essentially are selling my kids and their future, and their peers' future down the river, and I don't take kindly to that. Person who has children should... Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your perspective.
Guys, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
It doesn't sound like the mic's on.
You're on now.
Check, check. Hello. All right. Thank you guys so much. In the desire for a large public works project here, I'm talking about the streetcar. I think we're getting confused about what the function of it is. If the function of a streetcar were transportation, we would not build an extension to the tune of $120 million to vacant land. Instead, we would say we need to preserve right-of-way to build one if and when we need one. A streetcar in actuality is a visible commitment to induce development, and with a streetcar in place, it will only make sense to develop the now vacant MPAP land as intended and as we all want, into a vibrant, multi-use, future-forward neighborhood. The value of the streetcar is to provide an incentive to get to the place we all collectively envision, and maybe also it eventually moves a couple people around. My objection here is the funding. To build a streetcar in LID, aka property taxes, will be required, and it's unfair to ask property owners along Northwest 23rd Avenue, where the extension will come down and then up into the MPAP area, to pay for a streetcar to a paper neighborhood. It's a neighborhood now that exists on planning documents but doesn't exist in real life. The problem here is that the Public Benefits Agreement requires 1535 to participate in an LID, but doesn't set the boundaries of the LID. An LID is An LID is supposed to be a democratic process in which landowners in drawn boundaries agree to assess taxes upon themselves, in this case, to fund a streetcar. However, incorporating land that has agreed to a quid pro quo yes into a larger LID area, in this case, property that's on the extension down Northwest 23rd Avenue, is fundamentally undemocratic and unfair. I think there has to be a way to separate the LID in a way where there's an LID for the area that is going to be upzoned, because they're getting tremendous value added that upzoned area, and that's why they're agreeing to this public benefits agreement to fund the streetcar. However, the area on 23rd Avenue that's going to go up to connect the neighborhoods, they're also going to be asked to pay for the streetcar, which there currently is no benefit to build that. I mean, nobody in the neighborhood currently really has any reason to go up there, because there's no neighborhood that's currently built. So I think, you know, we're going to have to be very careful about what we're asking property owners in Northwest Portland to really do here. I'm just kind of riffing now, but I think you can kind of see that in an LID, there's supposed to be property owners that get to vote to assess property taxes on themselves, and if there are landowners that own major parcels of land that are being upzoned and are going to be an automatic yes, then the bigger part of that LID that's not a part of the upzoned area is going to get a property tax cram down. So I think we need to be careful. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It's good advice.
Sorry. Can't ever see the sign.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for the opportunity of addressing the council. I am really pleased that the area will be recognized in York, and hopefully a museum as well as a park could be a part of this development. And if the property owners would be willing to sell part of the property that they own to a group of us who would be willing to be investors, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jamarien Malley. They're joining us online.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
This is Jamarien Malley. I'm the campaign manager for Portland Harbor Community Coalition, and I just wanted to give my input on what's happening in this area with concern with me also being a member of the York Collective and Portland-born and raised. There are some things I've seen having, like, specific steps being taken with the benefits that are going to have on the community, like, as far as health and business. There are a lot of things that the York Collective had to offer, and a lot of that didn't align for what they seemed to want to present it to, for things like diversity and what the original history of that area entails. I just wanted to see if the council would be ensuring that that follows through. That was my only question.
All right. Thank you.
Next, we have Brian Ames.
Welcome. Again, I'm Brian Ames, here representing the ownership group of the former ESCO property. We are here to express our support for the public benefits agreement. We have been working hand-in-hand with the city for over four years now to bring this plan to final adoption. We stayed the course and now ask that you approve the PBA. PBA delivers on the city's primary and critically important objectives: housing and jobs, and at the same time, delivers green transportation infrastructure, parks, and the commemoration of York. And the PBA helps us deliver on our vision for this land that brings all these public and private objectives into reality. We are longtime Portland residents, investors, and importantly, builders. We do not have a business model to just hold land. Instead, our vision is to develop community and then stay in the land over the long term, just like our partners have done in the Pearl District. We bought this site to build, and under its current zoning, we can build. We can build the 400,000-square-foot Last Mile Warehouse, consuming almost our entire property, and we have been asked to do so, but that is not what we want to build. Such a use would bring a limited number of jobs, no park, no new transit or transportation infrastructure, no commemoration of York, and no affordable housing. We want to build light industrial and other commercial uses that grow middle-wage jobs well beyond a large-scale warehouse. New homes for people who work in these industrial and commercial jobs, a new park for families and nearby residents, new options for opportunities in this city for those that do not live and work today in a high-opportunity area. We are owners of industrial businesses in the area. This plan will support our workers in these businesses and allow us to attract and retain more employees for our existing operations. The PBA is deliberately and carefully balanced to ensure delivery of these public benefits while also encouraging private investment and development. We ask you approve this PBA and allow greater things to happen on this property to better serve the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristi White.
Hi, I'm Kristi White, land use attorney for 1535 LLC. I have three minutes, so I'll hit three things. I'm going to reiterate what Brian just said. There's no question that this PBA supports middle-wage job growth far superior than the existing zoning. As you heard his example, they were approached by that Last Mile distributor during this planning process, and the calculation was about 120 jobs that would take up most of the ESCO property with a warehouse, parking, and loading. We can do that today, and we can do it right now, we can do it as permitted outright. If that's what we want, that's what we'll get, but it's not what any of us want. They didn't make that deal, and in that process, the city set a higher bar for us. Now we have this requirement to do better and to produce not 120 jobs and a parking lot, but 400 middle-wage jobs with housing, a park, commemoration of York, and other public objectives. So if the question is which zoning produces the best opportunity and in fact requires middle-wage job production, the PBA is it. We also support Commissioner Ryan's amendment on the job-study metrics. I love data. I think it's important for accountability, and I think it will help us in all phases of this redevelopment. Number two, there's no interference with existing industrial uses. Nicolai will be a primary freight route, providing access to US 30 and the highway, and Vaughan will remain a local service truck street. The city's analysis actually in the PBA finds that there's no street, neither Vaughan nor Nicolai, that has a delay in service or a queue that's longer than the off-ramps onto the freeway. I'd also love to direct your attention to that letter from Calbag, who is one of the investors in this property, and what's interesting is they have that industrial use right across the street. 50% of their jobs are BIPOC jobs, and they have a significant number of middle-wage jobs. And in the recent past, they've lost seven employees and couldn't get 12 to commit to middle-wage jobs because it's too expensive to drive here, and there's no place for someone to live that they can afford. So the other whole lens on this project is that it's creating that wraparound opportunity in a high-opportunity area that supports other industrial users in the area while growing light industrial and other middle-wage jobs. This is also a different kind of PBA. This isn't public land. This is private land with no additional public subsidies, yet we're still able to commit to honoring York with participation of the York Collective in the PBA. With that, the city wants us to do better. We're here to do better. This is an opportunity that does not come around often, willing landowners, no additional public subsidies. The result will be city building, and we ask the council to firmly put this PBA in Portland's win column. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes testimony.
All right. Colleagues, here we are. Obviously, we're not taking a vote today. We'll be moving this whole package to a future meeting, but are there any questions for staff at this particular point, or any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a quick question for staff.
Why don't we have staff come back up, please? Thank you.
I want to thank everyone who testified today on this item. We've heard several members of the public express concern about tribal participation in this process and project. Can staff kind of tell us where we are on that and what the plan is?
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Patricia Diefenreifer for the record. So as we may have described previously, we did send some communication, email communication through our Office of Government Relations, pardon me, to a number of different tribes. We received one response to those emails. It was from the Klika Tad tribe. We did follow up several times with requests to schedule a meeting with the chief, who did express interest, and we did not hear back from the chief. So we have not been able to secure a meeting time with him.
Well, I hope folks continue to try. It seems like there's a desire on both sides to have further talks here, and it seems like it would serve this project well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Very good. Anything else? Any other amendments? This item is continued to the city council meeting on December 4th at 10:25 a.m. time certain to vote on Commissioner Ryan's amendment. We're scheduled to make final vote on December 11th at 2 p.m. time certain. Our next item is a time certain item at 4 p.m. We're in recess until 4 p.m. We're in recess until 4:00 p.m.[152.34]
Session will go to our second item for this afternoon is item one zero two zero times certain four P M. It is a report. You have to read it.
Except twenty twenty critical assessment phase two report from independent monitor LLC provided pursuant to the settlement agreement between the United States and city of Portland.
Colleagues, as I'm sure you recall that as part of our settlement agreement with the Department of Justice, the city agreed to commission an independent assessment of the city's response to the twenty twenty protests and riots. Nick Mitchell and his team at independent monitor LLC last came to us in August of twenty twenty three to present their initial report recommendations, which we at that time voted to accept. Since then, Mr. Mitchell's team has continued its work to follow up on our efforts and are here today to present the LM LLC phase two. Now, I guess it's an I, an I am LLC phase two report. Chief Deputy City Attorney Heidi Brown is here as well to provide some additional background and information. So I'll pass it to Heidi to get us started. Good afternoon, Heidi.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Good to see all of you this afternoon. As I know you all recall, but maybe anybody watching from home may not, we made some amendments to the settlement agreement between the United States and the city of Portland in twenty twenty two. And one of those amendments was that we would have an outside entity perform a critical assessment of the twenty twenty force used by the city during that one hundred and seventy one days of protest. And so I am LLC, a wonderful team, took that work on, did a lot of research, a lot of interviews, came out several times, met with folks. We had their phase one report last August in which they came up with twelve recommendations for the city. And then six months later, the city filed a response to I am LLC describing the work we had done to implement the recommendations. And then Mr. Mitchell and his team, I am LLC followed up. We gave them a lot more documentation, information and interviews that informed their phase two report in which they are providing an update on how well the city has done in implementing the recommendations that they gave to us last year. With that, I'll turn it over to you and I'll be available here for any questions that you all or anybody has that you'd like me to answer.
Great.
Thank you. Nick, I'll turn it to you.
All right. Well, very good. Thank you for that introduction, Mayor Wheeler and Heidi. We appreciate it. We're very pleased to be with you again presenting this follow up assessment. I'd like to begin by introducing my colleagues who are with me here today. You may see on the screen, Matt Butis, Dr. Matt Butis is was our sort of data analytics lead on the phase one project and the phase two assessment. And Pete Davidoff is a nationally renowned expert in public order policing and was a subject matter expert on both of these projects. I think someone is going to be running this slideshow for me if I'm not mistaken. It may be Stephanie Howard. If you're on, perfect. That's great. You anticipated where I was going next. So I'm going to, you know, do a fairly high level overview of the phase two project. I think you should feel free to interrupt. If you have questions, you can ask them during this kind of quick run through, or if you'd like to save them for the end, that's also okay. You know, either one works for us. Again, the phase one project, we sought to evaluate the effectiveness of P P B's public order training and response to the protests and riots of twenty twenty, as Mayor Wheeler already indicated. I won't sort of go through the, you know, the methodologies that we use, but suffice it to say that it was a fairly deep and broad investigation that involved, you know, many dozens of interviews, lots and lots of meetings with the P P B command team, lawyers for the city, elected officials, community members and others, and review of voluminous sort of internal department records, city records, video submitted by community members and others. And from that very large quantum of evidence, we developed some theories and some ideas about why the city of Portland descended into disorder during that period and some twelve actionable recommendations for fixes that could be made to prevent similar outcomes in Portland in the future. As Heidi mentioned, the phase two report assesses the city's progress at implementing those recommendations. And I should note that much of the data that we gathered for the phase two assessment, we gathered in spring, kind of bleeding into early summer. And the interviews that we conducted were in the sort of late spring, early summer. And I know that there has been additional work by the P P B particularly related to the elections of earlier this month. And so there may be some updates that P P B and other city officials may want to provide to the information that we're sharing today, that we shared in the phase two assessment. But I can tell you that overall, our impressions were quite positive. We have concluded that the city took meaningful, but in some cases preliminary steps to implement the recommendations. And I'll walk through some of that in the slides to follow. Next slide, please. Before I dive in here, let me also say that we really appreciate the cooperation of city staff and P P B members and community members. We, you know, as I said, we talked to lots and lots of people and we found the department to be transparent and helpful as we conducted this review. So that was, it was a pleasure to work with city folk on this, given that they really, you know, people really tried to help facilitate the work that we were doing. To do the phase two assessment, we again analyzed the directives and procedures of the P P B, most specifically those that relate to public order events, use of force and other related matters. We reviewed emails, meeting minutes, memoranda, job announcements, selection criteria, training records, videos of training provided to police officers, with a particular focus on the training and the architecture set up for the new rapid response team developed by the P P B. We also assessed records related to the efforts to reestablish mutual aid relationships with other jurisdictions and to grow P P B's crowd management incident commander program. And we visited Portland, interviewed leadership in the R T, line officers, other non sworn city personnel, and again, members of the Portland community. Next slide, please. The first recommendation from our phase one report, as some of you may remember, was that the city should rebuild its mutual aid network. The city is reliant upon mutual aid relationships as are most large cities in America in times of emergency, including a public when public disorder falls within a city. And there was a nearly complete fracturing of those relationships in twenty twenty. And so we put it first in our report because it is absolutely essential to the city's building the city's capacity to manage these kind of events in the future. And we concluded that the city has taken noteworthy steps to rebuild that mutual aid network, including obtaining commitments of support for CERT or SWAT operations and other kinds of non public order operations with several of its neighboring jurisdictions. So that was very positive, that through a series of meetings, you know, multi-party meetings and individual discussions with other city officials and policing leaders from other jurisdictions, some commitments of support were obtained. However, the city has not yet successfully reestablished those mutual aid relationships for public order deployments, notwithstanding its efforts to do so. And I think where we ultimately came down here was that from our discussions, I think we feel optimistic that if the city can build a track record of responding to public order events with a whole of government approach, it may serve to encourage other jurisdictions to again consider partnering with the city for public order deployments. Next slide, please. Another recommendation from the phase one report was that the city must dramatically reduce its reliance on crowd dispersals with riot control agents. And what we found in the phase two assessment was that P P B has invested in event liaison officers and has built a public order philosophy that de-emphasizes crowd dispersals with riot control agents, which are both very positive developments. A lack of available video and embedded plainclothes officers, among other things, led P P B to rely too heavily on crowd dispersals instead of targeted crowd interventions in twenty twenty. Some of the, some of the video issues that we discuss in both reports will be addressed with the rollout of body worn cameras. But real time video in the command post may still be limited, given existing legal constraints on the city's ability to use cameras in the downtown area. We also recognized in the report that the city created a specialized team of plainclothed officers that can be embedded in public order events to provide intelligence to the command post. And we made a number of recommendations for the procedures of that team to be tightened, some of which I believe have been implemented and some of which may still be under consideration by city officials. Next slide, please. We recommended in the phase one report that P P B strengthen and clarify its public order and use of force directives in several ways. We noted that following twenty twenty, P P B updated its directives to address several issues, but there remained opportunities for improvement, including tightening or addressing specifically rubber ball grenades, which were not expressly prohibited in P P B directives. However, the remaining supply of those grenades was decommissioned and they are included on a list of controlled items. But we made some recommendations related to public order announcements. So officers were not required to audio record such announcements. And we had some suggestions there to ensure that that they would be recorded and that that be required in the future. And we also had some recommendations related to procedures associated with the use of the dynamic tactic, baton pushes and slow walkers, all of which were addressed in recent training given by P P B. But we again emphasized in the phase two report that we believe that policy, that the changes in approach related to those issues should be formalized in P P B policy, which has not yet been completed. Next slide, please. One of the recommendations related to P P B's use and reliance on, you know, what we called internal controls on officer use of force and a need to ensure that office, that they were being used in the future. This included keeping better track of munition inventory. So developing procedures to record what munitions are being acquired and deployed into the field and to whom, to which officers, and developing tracking systems to do that. There were issues related to force reporting. So P P B has now addressed some of those by providing resources to officers, including body worn cameras. But we had some concerns that those resources may be insufficient if the R T is deployed for multiple consecutive days. And relatedly, you know, a very important issue with respect to public order deployments is the investigation of uses of force. And P P B has made some improvements here too, such as assigning sergeants specifically to the task of gathering information and investigating force incidents. But we ultimately concluded that even, you know, with those dedicated sergeants, P P B may struggle with the workload, particularly if there are multi-day deployments, because all of, you know, any use of force needs to be investigated. And in multi-day deployments where, you know, the number of uses of force may, you know, become more than more than just a small number, the system can become overwhelmed with, you know, sergeants attempting to investigate each one of those incidents. And so we flagged that as an area that we believe continued work is necessary to refine the system for investigating force incidents during public order events. Next slide, please. We also, of course, recommended that the city create a new specialized public order team consistent with emerging standards for such teams around the country. When the phase one report was written, the R T had been disbanded and P P B lacked a specialized public order policing team. We were encouraged that the city and P P B had created a steering committee to launch a new public order team. And that committee obtained buy in from public officials, including assignment based pay increases to, to four team members, which was a positive development. The new team was launched and is now staffed with forty two officers, or I should say, at the time that we were in Portland, so in late spring, early summer, it was staffed with forty two officers, eight sergeants and a lieutenant. Those numbers may have fluctuated since then. It has a set of standard operating procedures, which is positive, and is set to receive at least ninety six hours of training a year. We did note in the report that keeping the name R T, so resurrecting that name, may have been a missed opportunity to emphasize to the public that there's a new approach to public order policing, given that our community interviews reflect, you know, some continuing amount of baggage and concern about the R T. We did feel that that may have been a missed opportunity for the P P B to launch a new team with a new name to reflect a new set of procedures and standards for how, you know, large public order events would be policed. Next slide, please. One of our recommendations from the phase one report was that the team, the public order team should be transparently introduced to the public and receive rigorous scrutiny and oversight, both internal scrutiny from the command team of the P P B, as well as oversight from the police oversight entity, which I understand is still in flux in Portland. One of our most significant and to some extent surprising findings from our phase one project in our community interviews were just was just how surprised many members of the community were by the policies, tactics, munitions, et cetera, being used by the R T. And, and so we thought it was very important that as a new public order team is launched, that there be, you know, meaningful efforts to bring the public in and explain how it will operate and what standards it will use and what equipment it will use to address that surprise that we heard and ensure there's sort of public buy in to the approach being taken with this new team. We also identified, as I mentioned, that there was insufficient internal scrutiny of R T by P P B's then command staff. Since the phase one report was issued, the city took a number of steps to address these recommendations, including holding a press conference to introduce the new R T. We recommend or recommended additional outreach to the outreach to the community, possibly through the many, many, many existing police community committees, which I won't attempt to name or list here because it would be a very long list and we'd be here for quite a while. But we did recommend that some additional outreach occur to bring, again, bring the public in. P P B described increased scrutiny by command staff in the self assessment that it produced to us, which Heidi earlier described. But there's an opportunity, we think, to document, to further document that scrutiny and procedures. And we really, in our phase two assessment, didn't say very much about, you know, we continue to believe that there is a need for external oversight through whatever police oversight agency is created in Portland. But we didn't really say too much about that because again, our understanding is that that remains in flux and no such entity has yet been seated or begun its operation. So that's an area where continued work will be necessary once the new oversight agency is launched.
Yeah, just to be, to be clear on that last point, this council has been blocked by the federal judge from pursuing any further action on that. That is not a decision of this council, just to be clear.
Yeah, no, that is, that is.
You should say that, please.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's, that's helpful. Yeah, we don't really opine on why it has not, you know, has not been.
It's a matter of public record.
Yeah, no, understood. We're simply noting the fact that whenever it happens, whenever it's seated, there will be some, some work necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. We recommended in the phase one report that the city continue to improve its public order training consistent with recent standards. And we have seen that since that time, the city has, or P P B has subjected its recent public order training to robust oversight and recommend that that process that has been used be documented and formalized in policy to ensure that it continues in the future. We also noted that P P B held two day public order in-service training for all sworn staff in twenty twenty three. And probably one of the things that we were most pleased about in doing this whole project, the city committed to providing R T members with ninety six hours of training a year, which is at the level of an advanced public order team under the N T O A's public order standards. That's a very high level of training. And we think it's commendable. We think that is an investment that will bear fruit in terms of the capability of that team. So we were very pleased that the city was able to reach that ninety six hours a year number. Most of the R T training is yet to be held, so it's somewhat hard to evaluate. But the training that we did observe and review is promising. Next slide, please. We also recommended that P P B policy should require chiefs, you know, the chiefs of the P P B to be engaged with and visible to officers during deployments. We found that P P B executives did not visit the field or debrief with officers often enough in twenty twenty. In its self assessment produced to us, P P B indicated that the chief's office will play a more active role in reviewing public order plans and be present at briefings and debriefings in the future. We saw that this occurred during recent deployments, such as those at Portland State University. And we were pleased to see a more active role by the chief and his, and his, you know, immediate subordinates. That increased role has not been documented in P P B directives or procedures yet, but we suggested that it should be formalized as an expectation of the P P B command team going forward to ensure that it lasts, it outlasts any one chief's administration. Next slide, please. Among our, one of our more important findings was the need to strengthen and deepen the bench of leaders who could step into these important command positions for public order events, particularly incident commanders and operation section chiefs. Because P P B did not have enough trained leaders to serve in those positions in twenty twenty, in follow up, following our report, P P B identified a group of approximately thirty leaders to serve as incident commanders and operation section chiefs and committed to recurring meetings of that group. The meetings appeared to be very, you know, productive from the agendas and we reviewed in the discussions that we had. We noted though that attendance at those meetings fluctuated significantly. And it's important that that group be meeting and debriefing and sharing information and working together to be prepared for major public order deployments. And we suggested that the P P B should make those meetings mandatory so that all of those leaders are in attendance in the future. Next slide, please. I'll try and be quick through these last slides. We also recommend that the P P B develop a checklist and hold supervisors accountable for the briefings provided to officers when they're being sent out onto the street for public order deployments. That was in response to the fact that P P B did not consistently prime officers with the rules of engagement in twenty twenty. And in response, P P B has created a briefing forum with a checklist that requires supervisors to certify that they've addressed some of the most important topics before officers are sent into the streets, such as the, the incident objectives, the priorities and requirements associated with proper use of force. We did note that there's an opportunity to expand that use of force section to include reminders about de-escalation and kinds of force that are authorized, restricted and prohibited. Next slide, please. We also recommended, and it, you know, relatedly, that P P B formalized the debriefing process for public order deployments. And some of that work has been accomplished through the creation of a debriefing checklist and the creation of some standard operating procedures associated with debriefing of public order events. Next slide, please. And finally, the city, as we've talked about here. And finally, the city, as as we've talked about here, we recommended that the city produce a self-assessment about the implementation of these recommendations. And in March 2024, the city did provide such a self-assessment to us with discussion of the recommendations, some discussion of the progress made and obstacles. It was an accurate reflection of the city's progress at that time and a useful primer. And it reflected, as this final bullet point indicates, our general experience on the project, that the city and P P B were transparent, helpful, and dedicated to learning from their experiences in 2020. Thank you. So that that concludes our use of the slide deck. We are, of course, available to take any questions that you may have.
All right, very good. And Heidi, does that complete your presentation as well? Thanks, Nick.
Mayor, if anybody, Council, if anybody has any questions also, Assistant Chief Dobson is here with me. I don't know if he has just a word or two about the report and the assessment and how P P B has taken that.
Greetings, commissioners and mayor. I just wanted to thank Nick again for the opportunity that he had to give us an outside look of and evaluate how we did in 2020. Many of the recommendations that he made, again, as he pointed out, were in the spring, and we've made leaps and bounds in most of those recommendations since then in preparation for the election period of time. We also have some other things that we're moving forward with. We've we've opened some dialogue with several of our activist communities to have a good dialogue with them and start a a conversation about what does that look like so that we can work better together in the future? And we'll be soon presenting you with a grant that we received through the federal government on being able to bring in Professor Stott from England, who is one of the world-renowned leaders in in how the stuff works and crowd dynamics and working, again, with outreach with the community so that we can be on better footing going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just just a comment more than a question. Nick, you'd mentioned in your report about the restoration of mutual aid. To what do you credit that restoration of mutual aid? What has changed specifically that you heard, particularly from our potential mutual aid partners?
I think what we heard, Mayor, we heard a sense that it may be the political environment had changed to some extent and that there was less hesitation. You know, we heard post-2020 was a lot of hesitation about sending officers into Portland and a fear that they might be subjected to criticism that may be perceived as unfair or subjected to prosecution or other legal sort of consequences that may be perceived as unfair by those officers or officials in those other jurisdictions. And and I think what what we heard was that a sense that maybe some of those risks have abated to one extent or another, and there's at least a willingness now to have a conversation. I don't think there's, there have not been commitments unless, you know, Assistant Chief Dobson, he, of course, has the most up-to-date information. But as of our last visit to Portland and the records that we reviewed, there have not been commitments about supporting P P B officers on, you know, skirmish lines in the event of future public order deployments, but certainly a greater willingness to have conversations about doing that and other kinds of commitments for other kinds of support by these other jurisdictions.
Thank you. Do we have public testimony?
We do. We have two people signed up.
Why don't we hear that?
First is Dan Handelman. Dan's online.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Are you able to hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Thank you. This is Dan Handelman. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a member of Portland Cop Watch. It's fortunate for the city, the police, and the community that the reactions to the elections on November five and the police's response to them have been relatively quiet. I M L L C's follow-up report asked the city several times to prioritize crowd control training before the elections, though it was just released last week. The report doesn't mention that the P P B's updated crowd control policy was posted for review in July, but not approved until October fifteen, though any positive changes were not in effect until last Friday, the fifteenth of November, ten days after the election. The assessment from I M L L C points out some flaws in how the Bureau rolled out its public order team, including the poor judgment it took to call the new group by its old name, the Rapid Response Team. The first version of the crowd policy posted in February clearly said it would be called the Public Order Unit. While that was also a poor choice, it was discouraging when the city attorney chimed in during the chief's presentation to the P C C P about the new team and claimed they always intended to keep calling it the R R T. The report also says the news conference held June thirteen was a good first step to introduce the team to the community, while remarking that most of the audience were the media. What they left out is that after P C C P asked to hear the chief's plan to introduce the revamped R R T to the community at its June twelve meeting, the news conference was held the next day, and the community was not informed this was happening. This is not good community relations. We're also torn between supporting the city for following the judicial order not to record people who aren't engaged in criminal activity and being aggravated by the city's continuing to appeal that decision. The I M L L C does not help by rightfully telling the police not to send undercover cops into a crowd unless there's articulable criminal activity, but on the other hand, remaining confused about the protections given to our community by state statute. We're concerned that one option the P P B explored is to gather information from private businesses' security cameras, making this more of a surveillance state. Three minutes is not long enough to cover the whole forty-five-page document, but here are some highlights. The Bureau gets praised for recruiting a new team, but it's not mentioned that many of these are officers who resigned their posts in protest when one of their members was indicted. Will that happen again? Will community members trust people who are not only engaged in acts of brutality as part of the old R R T, but stood by one of their own who was correctly called out for his violence? The I M L L C does a good job telling the Bureau to ensure enforcement of its rules is even-handed regardless of protest content. But one key point from 2020 is absent. The police were producing protests demanding an end to police misconduct and violence. They responded by engaging in active misconduct and violence. Special attention needs to be paid when.
Yeah, thirty seconds, Dan.
I hear you. We agreed that the policy should be specific when describing criminal activity. I M L L C points out that officers could go after minor violations rather than something that indicates a credible engage in violence or significant property damage. Significant is key, because people have been cited for drawing chalk messages on the sidewalk. We hope the Bureau will come back to the community through the P C C P or the Citizen Review Committee, which proposed a detailed recommendation in 2021 that was never responded to in a meaningful way.
Thank you.
Sarah Hobbs.
Hi, Sarah.
Sarah. Doesn't look like she's joined. That concludes testimony.
All right, very good. Are there any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
You move.
Commissioner Gonzalez moves. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Maps. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Maps.
I want to thank the Independent Monitor for this report, and I want to congratulate the Police Bureau and thank them for their diligent work to continue to serve the people of Portland better. I also think the mayor deserves a lot of praise for navigating this incredibly challenging policy space. While we've made a lot of progress, there's still more work to do, which is completely normal in a city. You're never done with the work of building a city or building a better police bureau. But one of the things I'm proud of as we enter the end of this calendar year is that we've made an enormous amount of progress over the past four years, which is why I am happy to vote aye on accepting this report.
Rubio.
Thank you to the monitors for this presentation report. Since I took office in 2021, I've observed over this entire time the tremendous amount of work that has gone into satisfying a lot of the recommendations. And I also want to commend the P P B staff, including Chief LaBelle, Chief Day, Mary Claire Buckley, and all the analysts in that unit, as well as Robert, Heidi, Sarah, Lisa, and the great team in the city attorney's office, and Stephanie Howard in Mayor Wheeler's office. I'm also really hopeful to hear the progress that's been made and also recognize that we still have work to do and steps to get there. But my hope is both that our community and officers together will continue to place a high value in our new approach to public order, to transparency and building trust, and in some cases, rebuilding trust, even long after the I M L C C work is done. So thank you to everybody involved, and thank you for the hard work and the important steps that have been taken. I vote aye.
Brian.
Thank you, Heidi, and thank you, Independent Monitor Nicholas Mitchell. It was good to hear the report. I actually just want to take a moment to thank you, Assistant Chief Dobson, and all of the members of P P B. I can't tell you how many times I've heard over the past couple of weeks how the service that was provided during Election Week was noticed. I heard from many people, one person that had to call nine-one-one, that it got picked up right away. And I've heard from a couple of people that service response time was very quick. And so I think we'll look a little bit more into the staffing model that was produced to provide that, as it probably is a good indicator of what is needed to keep Portlanders safe. But I'm back to the topic. Thank you for the report. I appreciate the methodical work that takes place, and I continue to notice some humility in how it's received and how it's implemented. And that's all you can ask for. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Just very happy to see all the progress. I do want to reiterate on mutual aid, the importance of the city's reputation, what messages we convey, not just across the city, but across the state, in attracting and retaining partners on our most difficult days. It's essential that we continue to communicate that we're supportive of accountable law enforcement in the community if we want people to come to our aid on our darkest days. It's not just a city matter. It's a county. It's a D A. It carries across a lot of lines, including the functioning of our local courts. But with that, I vote aye to accept the report.
Wheeler.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the presentation today. Nick, thanks for your insights as we work continuously to improve our efforts. I also want to underscore that this reporting period ended in June, so it does not include any of the analysis of the efforts taking place subsequent to that time. And frankly, I think it's been very positive. That is not included in this report, just for the record. I'd also be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to express my profound gratitude for all of the work that has taken place. The Police Bureau and many other city bureaus and many of our external partners have worked together in ways that we have not done previously. And I think we are not only rebuilding from 2020, I think we're now setting the standard for other police bureaus around the nation. And I appreciate, Chief Dobson, that you and your team are getting the credit that you deserve, the work that you and your partners have done to strengthen and improve the services that we provide. I think it's also worth noting, as my colleagues did, that we prepared very differently here in 2024 than we did in 2020. We benefit from and learn from hindsight. And the fact that absolutely nothing happened is important to all of us. And I think as we go forward, obviously, we'll continue to experience challenges. This is as much an art as it is a science. It's through learned experience, and some of that experience is learned the hard way, that we improve things, and we will continue to refine our efforts. And Mr. Mitchell, I also appreciate your reporting and analysis. Sometimes I disagree with your assessments, but I do believe that these reports have given us tangible issues to discuss concrete ways of talking about what is and is not working and how we can improve things. And so I want to thank you and your team for your professionalism and your objectivity in the overall work that you bring to the table. Last but not least, I just have to point out sort of one broad theme that is not brought into these reports, but it's significant to me. And if I were ever to write a book on this subject, I would note that we had these teams deployed in 2017, 2018, 2019, and into 2020, pre-George Floyd's murder. And what changed with the dynamic of George Floyd was the Police Bureau, which is the bureau responsible for maintaining public safety and maintaining public and private assets, became the focal point of those protests. And that creates an entirely different and far more complex layer that has to be managed through by the Police Bureau. When you are, in fact, the subject of that community ire and you are the focus of those often destructive and violent demonstrations, that requires you to do things very, very differently than frankly, anybody else in this community. And so the work that you have done on preliminary findings, being clear about what the game plan is going to be, understanding is always the importance of de-escalation tactics, and being very strategic in terms of how you respond to each of these events becomes all the more important. And I'm really proud of the work you've done. I want to thank Stephanie from my office, Stephanie Howard. Thank you for for always being a good sounding board and diligent in your discussions with me about these various proposals and policies and evaluations. Heidi, thank you, as always, you and your entire team in the Legal Department for the great work that that you do. I also want to thank Chief Day, former Chief LaBelle, Chief Dobson. Thank you for sticking it out for so long and providing really incredible work to everything we do here. I am very happy to vote aye and accept this report, and I look forward to future progress. Well done. Thank you. The report is accepted or adjourned.